Alright, welcome everybody to tunnel meeting number sixty-nine. It's October, it's not eleventh, is it? It's October tenth. I'm not sure why I put eleventh on all the slides. Awesome. Uh, it's October tenth, uh, twenty twenty-three. And today, uh, we're joined by Esther, by Curtis, by Judith, OAP, Rojo, Tommy, Ubio and Water. Thank you very much for joining in. I do see an ambassador account without a name, so it's a bit hard to call you out, but appreciate you being there. That will unfold somehow during the meeting. Um, yeah, quick agenda outline. Uh, we start off with the work groups updates and um, then I make a couple of callouts for upcoming events and then um, we um, try to find consent on implementing the conflict resolution guidelines. And after that, there's space for, for open topics. And as a quick reminder for those watching for the first time, uh, about what the ambassador program even is. Um, it's a group of self-organizing workgroups and we all um, share the mission efficient and we want to contribute to the growth of the Singularity net ecosystem. And there's a whole bunch of different topics where if you're interested, uh, you can get involved and meet some cool people and hang out with and yeah, contribute. So if you're uh, if you want, please do hop onto our Discord server and you'll find the getting started channel there, which will get you started. Then without further ado, let's hop into the workgroups. Um, I see, um, we have fly in the room as well. Good stuff. Um, and that's the, the first one on the list. So could you give us a little overview of what's going on and what's gonna happen today?
Yeah, sure. Uh, the incubation guild is just after this one and last week was cool. Um, had some new people joining. Um, there's now an effort to kind of distribute the, the guild. Um, there was like the, the coming together of AI sandbox and.
I'm not sure if that's on my side or.
And for treasury where, um, people, where each workgroup can uh distribute their own resources. Um, so I'm really curious to uh initiate this from the ground up. But however, I last week realized that there's a lot of context to get through. So um, this week I've been in the process of like making documents to contextualize what's been going on so far. And um, a bit inspired by video workgroup, uh, Rojo's use of card to basically make a hub where all the information and links can be found. Um, that was, that was a great thing. Uh, and then yeah, incubation has been creating some documents recently, which will be kind of uh, invited strategy will be invited to like take them forward. Um, but yeah, get involved after this meeting. I'll post a form in the chat if you have any um, discussion topics which you would like to submit and yeah, see you there.
Thank you very much for that. Um, yeah, and as mentioned, uh, that's right after this town hall. About fifteen minutes passed. Cool. Uh, then next on the list is the archival workgroup and I believe we don't have a representative right now. Um, it's um, on the same slot as the Dwork PPL workgroup, um, which currently also no representative is uh present. And so they're bi-weekly and uh, this week uh, we have uh, Dwork PBL workgroup. And that's at thirteen UTC. Uh, you can find the, for both these workgroups, you can simply see on the Discord channel what's the latest and what will be uh covered during the upcoming meeting. Then next on the list, um, that brings us to head of for um, the strategy workgroup.
Uh, you did. Um, yeah, if you can hear me, I'm walking out of the library, so don't yell that again for talking. Uh, strategy guild um, finished up with its conflict resolution document, which we're gonna discuss a little bit later. Um, so that's, that's pretty much where we uh ended this week. That's about it. Don't know what the future is gonna bring, but that's tomorrow.
Good stuff. Um, so just to confirm, um, will the, will the next session be tomorrow?
Um, I'd rather not have it tomorrow because there's a couple other things going on. Uh, so I'd kind of like to punt, but I don't know how to move it out of the calendar. And um, I'm also flying tomorrow, I think. So uh, let's put it for the following week and I think uh, Fly and I talked a couple of weeks ago. Um, we're gonna bring.
You've got, you've gone muted. Come back. Come back. Tommy!
We've got visual now.
Decision, decision on the fly in sunny Fort Lauderdale.
Well, you did cut out a little, but um, I think you were referring to potentially um, putting it after uh incubation, right? On Tuesdays.
Correct.
Check. Um, so for the record, will that be today or next week?
No, next week, next week.
All clear. Uh, yeah, cool. Thank you very much. Um, then next on the list is uh Treasury Guild and we're still in the progress, uh, process of um, reviewing quarter three budget and then figuring out uh how we're gonna approach quarter four. Uh, there will be a session. Double check. I think that's accurate. Uh, fifteen thirty UTC. And an additional session and I'll come back to this in a bit, but might as well mention it now. Um, is scheduled for tomorrow at twelve UTC. Um, last week we also had this um slot. Let me add it to the calendar. There we go. Um. So yeah, tomorrow at uh twelve UTC and uh Thursday at fifteen thirty UTC, uh, we'll continue the discussion on uh on budgeting. Then next up uh would be the onboarding workgroup and let me quickly check. We don't have a representative right now. Uh, that session is taking place on uh thirteenth, uh thirteen UTC on Thursday. I'm quite sure in the um onboarding workgroup Discord channel, uh, there will be a post beforehand about the uh, the agenda of that meeting. Then next up uh would be the AI sandbox, which is here, put us not, not yet as a part of um incubation, but Fly, can you entice us joining in?
Yeah, AI sandbox is a place to play around with uh AI tools. So that's like LLMs from engineering, going into some knowledge graphs. Uh, and soon we'll be looking into a bit more into langchain. So come along for some fun uh chats and playing around with tools. Yeah.
Thank you very much. I think. Yes, on the writers' workgroup, uh, we've got Canichi in the room. Could you give us a short update?
Um, yeah, definitely. So um, uh, great to see you guys again this week. Um, pretty much a quick summary from writers would be uh, we ended up changing some of our tasks that we had a few drafts for the deep funding round brief to um shed light, uh, get more eyes on uh the proposals in the pool. And uh, we, instead of going with the draft, we ended up going with Twitter trends due to the urgency and uh, thinking about like a bit more traction for that and uh, the votes have closed and we're waiting for results. On other tasks, we're thinking of uh covering the supervisory council election to give uh people more insights to the candidates and the entire process. Uh, we are still holding uh that till we get the, I think YouTube is down, uh, Snet YouTube, I haven't seen it for a while. So and they keep saying all the videos are private. So yeah. Um, apart from that, yeah, we um, we've reached our number. I think we currently still have a few uh pending reviews and still expecting a few submissions, but uh with the expected amount of submissions and all, we would reach our max of ten scribblers for this uh new quarter. And um, also we are branching out to base uh infographics and a few other things. And um, yeah, and we are also working on our quarterly report. I got the message, uh, Peter, and uh, we were actually working on it uh since last week, uh, trying to pull it all things we've been doing since, actually since June. And uh, yeah, uh, once that's ready, we'll be uh more than happy to share with the community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And then I keep putting Ro on the spot with this monthly update. Sorry for not updating that, that slide there. Sorry. Um, could you get this?
Of course. So um, yeah, for last week, uh, we did uh update our onboarding process. So that's been happening for the last two weeks. Uh, as I said last week, we had five people going through the onboarding. Uh, three people have been already voted in. Uh, so the only thing remaining in their process is to just give them the role on Discord, which we're waiting for. And then once that's done, uh, we'll do like a small initiation on Discord and uh, just to welcome them in into the team. Uh, we also had a vote between members to to basically introduce a new paradigm of rewards. And that will be not based on a specific task, but rather have a pool of reward uh each month. And then uh, basically counting the number of task points or hourly inputs uh that each member is doing. And that would give you a ratio out of the monthly reward. Uh, basically the thought behind that is uh that instead of focusing on the the minimal rewards on each, each thing that you do and like uh, we try to optimize the reward or like the financial incentives such that we optimize more contribution uh over like a more extended uh amount of time. So that's that. Uh, we uh, we're still working on our summaries. Hopefully you are watching them and liking and commenting uh on X on uh Instagram, if you're involved in that or TikTok or whatever. Um, uh, we also started our process of editing the, the, the town hall. So that was moved to the video workgroup. Uh, we had our first edit uh last week. Uh, so you can probably see, already see the video on YouTube. Um. Uh, yeah, we, we are working on different designs. There is some, uh, there is some couple of videos uh that are coming in as well. Um. It's, it's quite of a, it's quite a, let's say a tedious process to develop videos, especially if you want to, let's say, work on something from scratch or like uh really put in some time into it. But uh, again, we have members coming in. Uh, one of them, I guess Judith is here. Um, can't see any other one, but uh, we do have um, two other members that are coming in and hopefully we, we look forward to having more help from them uh to, to just get more quality content out there. Um. Yeah, thank you. If anyone is interested, by the way, um, reach out. Uh, there is also, you have a small, let's say website where you can have the information about the workgroup and there is a, a button that takes you directly to the task to join the workgroup. So if you're interested, uh, check it out and uh, yeah, we look forward to, to making more stuff and we look forward to seeing you next week as well.
Thank you. And then we get to the, well, let me keep the uh order of uh days in the week, actually. Uh, last um Saturday, so the very first session of the Gamer Skills. Uh, you can follow the progress on that um in the Discord channel. Uh, they're currently in um, like a trial phase. Um, so yeah, they're uh looking for uh always more people to join in uh on the phone there. A quick check, but no, there's uh currently no representative in the room. Um, and then that brings us to the education workgroup, which is taking place on Mondays nineteen UTC. Tommy, can I ask?
Hey, the library? Yes, absolutely. Education had a fantastic meeting this week. Uh, a lot of discussion. We are working on how to educate and certify uh ambassadors to be outbound uh talking ability on all the different uh projects in uh the ecosystem. Were a good number of them anyway, because they seem to continue growing. Uh, this week I did a um video on Rejuve and it was an educational one. We're learning to, or I'm learning to uh edit uh in video, which is an AI video software to create these uh educational things. Rojo, on the other hand, uh, came up with a masterclass concept, both of uh uh video uh written and with the test using Google Classroom. So we're going to be examining that uh next uh, next Monday in more detail. And perhaps we'll have focus groups um or, or whatever the community decides going forward. Uh, one thing I forgot to mention uh with strategy, it wasn't really strategy. Uh, but Thursday is the first ever focus group. Um, deep funding focus group listening room. Uh, it's going to be a town hall and there's going to be breakout rooms uh for proposers, uh voters and the review team. So we can give feedback in each of those and uh work to help improve deep funding. Uh, we're also gonna talk about a problem that we noticed is uh some bots on the reviews, uh, which does affect um reputation and voting power. So please join us Thursday. Uh, it's gonna be a powerful session. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, then looking forward. I think it's, it's the very first um focus group event, right? Where you're also presenting yourselves and, and listening.
That is correct. Most, mostly listening is, is what our intent is.
Cool. Um, yeah, then a quick reminder, um, below this video, you can find a link to um, add the public calendar to your uh Google calendar. So you can, well, uh, you'll always be up to date on uh when meetings are happening. And yeah, that brings us uh to a couple of shoutouts. Um, first one being the supervisory council election. And of which the voting opens tomorrow. The two sessions of uh last week, which in my opinion were pretty fucking awesome. Uh, it was really nice to see um such a huge group of enthusiastic people. Um, well, gather and then share ideas and yeah, it was, it was really good. Um, it did also cause our uh Singularity Net uh YouTube channel to be kind of somewhat um temporarily banned uh because of some trolls, but um, yeah, uh, that's being appealed and then should be back uh shortly. So for now, we're simply using a deep funding uh YouTube channel uh for that. I'll either comment below this video or try to quickly look them up uh and then put them in chat as well. Uh, but they're on deep funding um YouTube for now. So yeah, tomorrow, uh, start of day. So actually in, what is it? Uh, six hours, five and a half hours. Um, the voting opens. Um. Yeah, we have some people in the room, um, who are also candidates. I think it's a long list of candidates, to be honest. It's, it's really amazing. Um. I think, yeah, I think I'll refer to the, to the recorded sessions instead of uh now opening the floor to all participants. But yeah, really looking forward to uh, yeah, to that election. Uh, then a quick callouts, which I already mentioned on the, on tomorrow, uh, twelve UTC uh for a budget review session. And additionally during the treasury guild on Thursday. Uh, fifteen thirty UTC and well, the, the bottom uh one, uh, Tommy just called out the, the focus group session. Thanks for that. And um, I do want to put a quick reminder to the writers' contest, uh, which Mindplugs is hosting. And I think it concludes, no, that does, yeah, that does conclude the, the callouts and mentions section for this meeting.
Do we know when the deadline for the mind place is? I'll put up your head.
I don't know top of mind. Um, cool. Oh, I do see uh Sugar and Spice hopping in. Um, not wanting to put you on the spot, but uh seeing we already um did the workgroup updates. Perhaps you could give us a little update on uh onboarding workgroup?
Yeah, good evening, guys. Uh, I'm on transit for, I can't give an update because I didn't attend the last meeting. So uh, sorry about that. I don't know if there's anyone in the room who was present. Uh, Vanessa, sorry, is here. Perhaps you could give an update.
Um, I think I did attend it. I'm honestly, I, I think the, the meeting summaries and the meeting summaries channel, but outside of that, top of mind, I, I wouldn't be able to do that right now. Um, alright, um. Yeah, then moving on, um, for the uh, to the conflict resolution uh document. Um, basically, it's, it's a document which has been open for a community input for a couple of weeks by now. And yeah, pretty much uh, we want to during this tunnel, uh, look for consent on um, on that document and implementing it. Let me open it. I assume the screen sharing is also picking up this? Cool. Uh, I'll try to go over it in a somewhat um, quick fashion. Um, just to make sure we're not uh spending an hour uh reading a document. Um, basically that for, for a bit of context and uh, perhaps Tommy, if you feel like you can also put some context here, uh, since you were taking a lot of initiative in this. I don't want.
Well, let me see if you, can you, can you hear me? Okay, so I'm, I'm outside the library in the shade now, so I don't need my cool glasses. Uh, Curtis, um, I am on my uh cellphone five G via, via my Apple laptop, so I'm not sure of the connection. But the conflict resolution, um, it came out of a ethics document that we initially started months ago. And someone asked us to uh postpone the ethics document and to incorporate uh AI AGI with it, which is probably where strategy is going to go back to. Uh, we then focused on um a, another document called a code of conduct, uh, which we spent many, many weeks on in the same fashion as this conflict resolution document. Uh, we worked on it in strategy. We put it out to the community to edit, comment on it. Uh, we bounced it around in different ambassador meetings and uh it was, it was like last week announced in the town hall, just so there was fair warning. It's been up. So now we turn to this conflict resolution. Um, you know, what happens if Peter pisses me off? He hasn't done it yet, but there's the likelihood that he might do it. Where do I go? What do I do? I can't slap him because we're so far away and, and that wouldn't be a good response now, would it? That would be physical violence and certainly we don't do that. So we started this document on having an outlet, a process to handle, digest and move conflicts. So no one feels hurt and to maintain a safe place. Um, there, the document is pretty good in our opinion. It's a living document. Uh, it does need the formation of a few things. One is uh a body to handle the initial conflicts uh called mediators and they need training. And the workgroup lead is where we hope most every conflict can be settled, will need training in conflict resolution. That's, that's an action item. The other one is what if it can't be settled by the mediation committee or the mediation people or the workgroups? Well, we, we think we need a body and it's been kicked around for months now. Uh, the, the name on it is called the round table. It's not formed. We don't know what the consistency of the round table will be. We're thinking someone, you know, from this uh SC, someone maybe from the foundation uh and some ambassadors. That's an action item to form. And the round table people will also need training. But the document lays out the structure if, as you go through it. And um, we, we'd appreciate if you would uh, give us consent to implement this living document, which will change based on community input. And we will continue forming and working on getting us training and having something, whether it's the round table or something like it. Um, so that's the context of this and we have a lot of hours into it. Uh, it's been up for comment for, for about three weeks. Um, and now we're bringing it uh to ask you for your consent as a community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for um, well, for setting the stage uh right now, but also for your efforts in uh in moving this initiative forward. Um, yeah, well, then I, I think I'll uh simply go over the document and then uh, please do speak up if there's uh something in there which you feel it shouldn't be. Um. I think that's, that's the way to go. Simply covering a, a section and checking for uh, for objections. And in that way establishing consent. Okay, so uh, well, it starts off by um outlining the process of implementation, uh, simply being open to the community for uh, for input. And during this exact uh tunnel, October tenth, um, to either adopt, reject or recall from our input. It starts off by um defining how to, um, oh, there we go. And yeah, feel free to speak up.
Okay, good evening, everyone. It's actually evening in my time zone. So I, I was in the last onboarding meeting. I was okay to come through since Vanessa was not here and Supri didn't make it. She, she couldn't make it. She wasn't making it for the meeting. So can I go ahead?
Uh, you mean going ahead on, on the summary on the onboarding uh meeting?
Okay.
Well, it's a question because wait a second. Um, we just set the stage for dealing with this document. So I would prefer to um first do that one and then uh, for sure, it's welcome if you want to provide a summary on the onboarding call, but um, timing wise, I, I do think um, moving on with this document first makes more sense.
Okay, no problem.
Appreciate you stepping up. Uh, so yeah, we'll, we'll get back to that. Um, yeah, basically the um, document starts off with a couple of reporting channels. Um, which ideally, if there's a, is, if there's a conflict, uh, it should first be discussed between the parties to attempt to, to attempt to diffuse and achieve a self-resolution in a non-bureaucratic method. So basically, talk with each other and try to solve um, well, the conflict. And yeah, in this document, we loosely define conflicts as an active disagreement between parties. And then um, all conflicts and violations uh that are not resolvable should be reported through designated uh channels established within the ambassador program, which um currently is a work in progress. Um, so if you're in a context of a workgroup, simply report it to the workgroup lead. And if preferred, uh, reports um or feedback, this is a small typo, um, can be made anonymously. Um, there's a form for that, basically for, for providing anonymous feedback. I don't want to bore you with twenty checks, but a quick check on any objections? Alright. Um, yeah, then a, a bit of listing on uh, on the responsible parties. Um, as Tommy pointed. Yeah, then a bit of listing on, uh, on the responsible parties. Um, as Tommy pointed out, uh, there will be, uh, a mediation team will be created, which is a group of, uh, workgroup leads, um, who will handle conflict resolution attempts, uh, with the individuals involved. And including some training on conflict resolution. And, um, additionally to that, there's the the Round Table, uh, which is, um, pretty much the yeah, a group of of long-term, um, ambassadors. And as it's, uh, mentioned in the document as well, um, it's also been suggested to involve, um, potentially involve, um, members of the supervisory council and the foundation. But that's really in like the highest level of, uh, we'd really can't solve this ourselves, or it's it's such a big issue where, um. Yeah, basically, scaling up is 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 needed further. Um. Well, the basically the next point is dealing, uh, with the, there will be a form for reporting this. Um, and that mediation, uh, team that will, um, have to, uh, that's relying on the information, um, put forward in that form. That's pretty straightforward stuff. It is however, the end of a section, um, quick check in the room. I see no strong objections. Cool. Um, yeah, then the document goes on, uh, detailing the conflict resolution process, uh, starting off with informal resolution, um, basically as mentioned before, to encourage people to, um, resolve the issue informally, just by direct communication. Um, and if needed, um, there's an approach called, uh, the Good Call, which is basically setting some very simple guidelines for having a organ, uh, well structured and then, um, a conversation where where there's a lot of room, like everybody agreeing to let each other speak, for example, which sometimes, uh, really helps a lot in conflict resolution, but it's it's informal resolution, uh, option. Then if that's, uh, unsuccessful, um, to involve the mediation team, um, well, they will facilitate discussions between the conflicting parties and define common ground and reason, reach a resolution. And afterwards, they will report, uh, on the issue to the round table. And, um, yeah, a small note that if it so happens to be the case that, um, a member of the mediation team is involved in the conflict itself, there will not be, um, part of the group that's mediating, uh. Yeah, pretty straightforward, I guess. Um, yeah, then on the roundtable involvement, um, if mediation doesn't succeed in resolving the conflict, the conflict should be elevated. And they will then review the conflict and make a continued effort to mediate the conflict based on the code of conduct. Um, and additionally, the, um, the Code of Ethics, which is a document that still needs to be established. And then as a last resort, um, if the involved parties feel the resolution is not satisfying, an appeal can be made to the supervisory council. This, uh, may be a one-sided appeal, slight typo there. Um, and yeah, that that would really be the last resort because there's no further, um, no higher levels to appeal to, um. Yeah, that's basically the outline of, um, the conflict resolution process. Any objections in the room? Alright, um, then on to the spicy part, the disciplinary actions, um, which hopefully we wouldn't need to, uh, use too many times. Um, and yeah, as as setting the stage a little bit, the the purpose of this document is to bring a peaceful and safe mediation between, uh, parties. But there might occasionally be, um, consequences if a person is, uh, exhibiting, uh, unacceptable behavior. And in that case, the mediation team, uh, yeah, simply has a couple of options, uh, which, uh, they can advise on, advise on. Um, for example, including verbal warning, written warning, educational, uh, measures, suspension, um, probation. And in the most extreme case, uh, permanent removal of the ambassador program, um. Yeah, basically, it's, um, the advice on on what measures to take is is simply left to the mediation team. And. Yep, that covers. Um, also including an appeal mechanism, uh, to ensure fairness and transparency. An appeal mechanism will be established within the round table after the involvement by the mediation team. If an acceptable two all parties resolution is not able to be reached, um, this will allow individuals to challenge decisions if they believe they were unfairly treated or are not satisfied for any reason with the mediation team's suggested solution. Quick check on the room. Good to see that the room is, uh, still present. Um, we're getting to the end, um. A quick note on, uh, on documentation and transparency, um. So there will be, um, detailed records, um, will be maintained of all conflict resolution processes, including reports, discussions, decisions and appeals. The process may be shielded during the process. During the process, uh, but the activity and results will be documented and accessible in the ambassador's records, uh, in our commitment to transparency. Additionally, there will be, um, regular updates to participants on the progress of conflict resolution, ensuring transparency throughout the entire process. And, um, also appointing a separate ombuds person to each party that is independent of the conflict and all programs, if the conflict is not resolved within the goals or workgroup. The main purpose of this ombud, uh, person is to ensure proper bidirectional communication to their party uh, during the elevated resolution process. So that's basically just in the case of of like, um, upscaling the 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 resolution uh, to ensure, um, yeah, that everything is communicated correctly. Quick check on the room. I do see thumbs up. Cool. Um, then, um, ongoing education, um, basically stating that will provide, um, ongoing education and training to all ambassadors on the programs code of conduct, conflict resolution procedures and expected behaviors. And any objections on, uh, ongoing education? Just joking. And additionally, a bit in the similar vein of, uh, not really, um, let's say, extreme measures, um, to periodically review and update the conflict resolution program to adapt to the evolving needs and values of the Singularity Net Ambassador Program. And that concludes it, um, goes on with a final statement saying, um, that by implementing this comprehensive conflict resolution program, the Singularity Net Ambassador Program can effectively address conflicts while maintaining transparency, fairness and accountability within its decentralized community. And goes then forwards to, um, include a link to the Code of Conduct. And that is all. So a final check on, um, any objections? And if not, I I do correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there's any, uh, active objections. Neither in chats, cool. Then I think we, uh, we can assume consent. Good stuff. Awesome, um, any further thoughts on the topic? So not not maybe not just objections, but comments or anything? Esther, go for it.
Hi, uh, thank you. That was really interesting and I I really enjoyed, um, the going over as well as as, uh, having read it on my own. So thanks for that. Um, I have a question about, uh, the relative cost of, um, the ombudsman service. So there may be kind of disagreements where, uh, I'm just, I'm just thinking, uh, to to the the cost of hiring the ombudsman versus the cost of, um, what the disagreement is about. So how much is the ambassador program willing to invest in the mediation process before it becomes kind of financially unworkable?
Good question, um, I, in honesty, I don't think this is defined, um.
Yeah, um, yeah, fly, go for it.
There could be like a severity rating, um, and kind of actions taken accordingly, yes. Like, for instance, if it's a very low severity, like maybe it requires one person from a mediation team. If it's high, maybe it requires three or four, um, to get diverse opinions, for instance, I don't know. But it's a great point.
I I understand, and I can see that Tommy's written in the chat that it could be somebody from the community and somebody defined as a disinterested party.
There was one idea floated around actually originally by Grace, um, that there could be a jury, say, um, a random three people picked from a certain group, uh, who are not associated directly. And it's a role that isn't, um, ordained, but is is kind of by a roll of the dice. It's a son, like jury duty in a way.
Sure, it it could also be possibly requested from other parts of the decentralized space. I guess maybe somebody from deep funding who isn't an ambassador. So nobody from the ambassador pro- program, but somebody from Sincom Dow or from or from the, um, deep funding program, maybe.
Absolutely, yes. And I guess if further definitions or or like, um, procedures or or potential budgets even, um, that are not touched on, uh, right now, they can be added over time. Um, as as Tommy mentioned during introduction, it is a living document. We're not, uh, putting this like set in stone for the coming years, um, yeah, it's, uh.
One thing, one thing that would be great to get, uh, community input on is this uh, mediation team, uh, ideas on that. That's one of the things that kind of through the development of this document was realized that now we need to, um, create a so this mediation team, if you have thoughts on, on ideas on this, uh, this is something you can really, really help out with. Thanks.
Anybody in the room has ideas on that? I think so far, um, some of the things that, um, were mentioned or circulated as ideas was basically to have the group of, uh, workgroup leads being a pool of which a couple of people gets kind of selected. That could work. Um, additionally, I could see if if people are indicating interest in in wanting to be in such a pool. Should welcome that. Any thoughts?
Um, I think it was mentioned that the people that want to be mediators need to go through training. Um, how long would that training be and what would it entail? Is that set in stone yet?
No, it's kind of an action item to be, to be explored, um. Think it's something that should be open to the community, like, uh, to the community who want to be involved in the workshop or workshops.
Yeah, I guess before we figure out or before we ask who wants to be a mediator, I think we need to be really clear on what it actually entails. Like, we can't just sell people on the idea to become a mediator and then it requires half a year of mediation training or something really difficult, I mean.
Yeah, totally get you. I think it could be in the way of if we get, uh, a mediator expert that we could as a program, um, get them in as a facilitator, invite them and open up to the community, get any who are interested in the the topic to come along to the workshop without expectations of being some role afterwards. And then if that's something that people like or they will want to carry on, then that's something that the ambassador program is like trying to build towards. Perhaps it's like this. Would that be interesting in this way?
Yeah, and I think it was mentioned that mediators could be ambassadors or workgroup leads. So are you, would you consider people that are just generally interested in being mediators that don't have any role or is that completely off the table?
I think nothing is completely off the table, um. Uh, yeah, definitely is possibly, yeah.
Alright, cool. Interested how that will play out. I would definitely love to attend the training or workshop if there's such thing. I think that's super interesting.
Awesome. No, I I I think that's that's the best, right? I mean, ideally, you wouldn't put burden on people like, ah, you have to do your shift on the mediation team. Like, you you would want interested people who generally care about resolving conflicts and mediating. So I wouldn't put a strong, uh, requirement there for for a workgroup, uh, being a workgroup leader or or basically any role, I think. Hmm, cool. Any further thoughts in the room?
Yeah, it's interesting. I reflect a little bit on the formation of the supervisory council and the task force and um, correlations between the ambassador program and 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 that. And I see it as as this organization, this ambassador program grows, we're we're really gonna need kind of specialists who aren't necessarily interested in seventy percent of the program, but like very aligned with the mission and are interested in this specific thing. Definitely.
Alright, um, looking at the clock agenda-wise, um, technically, there's still five more minutes for for open topics, um, if we want to conclude this conflict resolution topic. And judging by, well, the lack of no further, um, hands being raised or people speaking up, I think we can conclude the topic. Tommy. Please. I see hands raised and applause. So I think, I'm not sure which of the two or both you intend. Just the applause, I think. Cool.
Do you have any topics for incubation that you would like to submit? More than welcome to submit on the forum, just in the chat. Yeah.
Nice, I do see some more in chats. I wouldn't put that in the recording next to me. All good, um. Yeah, a quick check on, uh, anybody having further topics to add to today's tunnel? Feel free to, cheers.
Um, just had a question. I think two weeks ago, you mentioned that Mindplex approached the Singularity Net ambassadors and to ask if we could write for them. And then today, a Mindplex writers contest was mentioned. Is that the same thing? Different thing?
No, it it could be, no, it it's separate. Um, that's basically, yeah, unrelated, um, initiative by by Mindplex uh, to get people interested in in writing for their magazine.
And everybody here is invited to participate in the contest as well.
Absolutely.
But two weeks ago, you mentioned that they approached you because they wanted to basically hire maybe the Singularity Net writers team and you said, um, we would have to figure out, you know, the the pricing and a few details. Is that still, are they still interested?
They are. I'm gonna have a call tomorrow on that, um, because, yeah, it's like you said, it's, um, there is details that need to be sorted out. Um, basically, we would be, um, potentially, um, upfronting the costs and then later on, after, um, their tokenist launch, the token generation event, um, at that point, there would be, um, they're paying back for the rewards. And then this is, uh, just for context, this purely focused on, uh, translation, uh, translations of already existing, uh, Mindplex articles.
Uh, yeah, right, it was translations, true. Um, cool, thanks. I just wanted to check if that moved forward in any way. No, thank you for the update. You know, thank you for the update.
I hope to put a little bit more um, progress on uh, Friday's writers, um, work group, I think. Yeah, it's mostly focused on translation, but that does feel like seeing the translation work group doesn't have dedicated meetings. I think writers' work group may make sense to put a little update there. Thanks for asking, cool, um, anybody else for now? Also quickly checking chats. Uh, there's a question uh, by Tommy, um, aimed at Esther, uh, what does the foundation or deep funding or the supervisory council have for conflict resolution? I'm not sure if you're uh, able to comment on that, Esther?
Um, I don't really think that the supervisory council is, uh. But actually, that's a, that's a good question for David and for for Penny. I don't know, um, whether they in principle have any conflict resolution duties. I don't think in practice it's ever been employed, but at least not in my time here, but. But it's it's possible that that's um, that's taken place, uh, and the foundation, I think that will have to be referred to. The relevant people who are dealing with the kind of equivalent to HR um, functions. Um, Peter, maybe you know about the funding?
Hmm, well, usually. Not procedure wise, I I think it's relatively basic and it's more on an ad hoc basis, like seeing what the situation is and trying to get conversation going. Which um, yeah, sometimes is easy and sometimes a little bit uh, less easy, I guess, uh, like a couple of weeks ago, we had an example of that. I don't think there's a strict methodology there that's uh, always being followed, um. No.
I- in other words, I think you're doing pioneering work here for the decentralized elements. Um, and I think, I think that it would be really valuable to keep, keep this kind of topic um, at the forefront while we're thinking about the blueprint and. Um, I think that it will be extremely valuable there, uh, especially if we can have a similar sort of mechanism for sync on down and. Maybe kind of share mediators and things like that, and I think, I think that what you're doing with the document here will be so valuable for for the decentralized communities.
Fully agreed. All right, I think that's a wrap then, uh. I'll throw in one final check, but uh, I think. We can conclude today's session. There we go, um. Yeah, then, um, Anjaka volunteered to provide a little update on the onboarding work group. Go for it.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, everyone. So I was present in the last meeting. Yeah, we actually went through the minute of the last meeting. If it's actually carried and it went well, then we talked about how we could help with our groups, onboard new members in their meetings. Yeah, there's a document for that, but we we are still bringing up suggestions. So I think by next week, you should be ready, documents should be ready. On how we can onboard, we can help with our group, onboard new members in their meeting. Then we also talked about the payment structure for tax and what to consider a tax in your body, in your body work group. But we brought up suggestions, but we weren't able to complete it due to time. So I I guess in the next meeting, we should be, you should be able to run it though. And that was all that happened last week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, cool, um, we'll uh, make a little note for the editor to uh, to splice that in.